Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We are opening the meeting and we will call to order. And I will move on to item one, see approval of the agenda. Superintendent Amari, do we have any changes?
Yes. Oops, we're amending. Item 11F is amended.
Thank you. And this is an action item?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded?
Yeah.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
It's President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes for zero. And then before we get started, unfortunately, trustee Adams is feeling ill and is unable to attend. And according to the new law, we need to have a motion and a passing of that motion for her to attend remotely tonight. So if we could take action?
I'd like to make a motion to permit trustee Adams to be a part of this meeting remotely.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
Thank you. Motion passes for to zero to allow trustee Adams to attend remotely while she is ill. And thank you so much, trustee Adams, for not attending while you were sick. Are there any public comments regarding closed session items? No, there are not. So given that, we will recess to closed session and return at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We are reconvening to open session. We did not take any action in closed session. And just a note, trustee Adams is feeling ill, and we passed a motion for zero earlier to allow her to attend remotely. So she is online. We're very happy she didn't come and get us all sick. Thank you, trustee Adams. And next, I will ask trustee Howard to read our mission statement.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you, trustee Howard. And for those of you are online and joining us in the room, I will read our public comment instructions. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form, they're the blue ones in the back, or via Google Form at www.cv.k12.ca.us/publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted or asked to sit down. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take action on any issues presented. And with that, we will move on to our, one of our main events tonight, which is school report and recognitions. We are really excited to have Castro Valley High School with us tonight. Superintendent Amari?
Yeah, welcome, everybody. It is wonderful to see you. And we will start with Principal Fortenberry.
Good evening, Superintendent Arvina Amari, President Lee Whitaker, and the Castro Valley Unified School District Governing Team. My name is Chris Fortenberry. It is my honor and privilege to serve as the principal of Castro Valley High School and be here tonight to share with you all we have done in accomplishing this year. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the students and staff who have joined us here tonight. CVHS students and staff, please stand. Thank you. And CVHS administrative team, please remain standing. I would like to introduce the team that makes all of this happen. Assistant Principal Kevin Baker, Assistant Principal Tracy Fields, Assistant Principal Stephen Hindy, Assistant Principal Stacy Southern, and last but not least, Assistant Principal Athletic Director Kathleen Stacy, who is absent because she is supervising the athletic contest tonight at CVHS. Thank you. Tonight, we will share with you, as we look at our medical careers and automotive program, and then we will recognize student Adora Bailey and parent volunteer Talia Bennett. Medical careers, please come forward.
They know me, most of them. I'm Ms. Anderson. I am the primary teacher for medical careers. I also lead our health and biotechnology pathway. It is the CTE pathway, which means we are preparing students to become 21st century workers. That means they have a lot of knowledge and skills to develop and then demonstrate. I have a couple of students with me. This is Angela Lee, this is Jelani Hanzi. They're both seniors in medical careers two. That is a capstone class. Last year, they were a part of medical careers one. Another former student, that is Eugenia Basili, she was in medical careers one. Last year, she's now in ROP medical. In this class, we do a lot of not only skills and learning in the classroom, but we also provide service to our school community. Most importantly, we do emergency preparedness. Because we're an evacuation site, we need to make sure that we're prepared in the event of an emergency, like what happened in, unfortunately, Turkey and Syria. So we want to make sure that the students get the skills and the knowledge to respond to an emergency on our site. That's just one of the small things that they do. I'd like the students to kind of share a little bit about what their career goals are and what they've taken away from this class. Not that I've given it to them, but what they've taken away. You okay with sharing? Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Angela, and I originally wanted to become a cardiac thoracic surgeon, but like through this class, I got introduced to more different types of like medical careers. And now I'm more interested in becoming like a paramedic for the firefighters, maybe just riding on ambulance. So yeah, thank you.
My name is Jelani Hanzi, and I am interested in being a nurse or nurse practitioner, eventually having my own practice. And this class has given me really a lot. I get to meet a lot of people who are already in my field that I want to go into and make connections with them, and they'll let me know like what schools that I could go to that will better my learning, and even with things to look out for, going for the harder teachers because I have better passing rates, no matter how easy you want it to be. And I think Ms. Anderson is credit-ing herself. I think she gives us a lot that she doesn't realize. So I think what the program wouldn't be, would it be without her? But yeah, that's just what I got from the class.
For me, always the student voice matters, and it should be our best branding tool. Behind you on the slide presentation or next to you, you'll also see some reflection about how this content has delivered itself in individual lives, not just professionally developed them as good future working professionals. You may recognize some former students from CVHS in this lovely little collage. On the upper right, that is Ms. Jessica Sue. She's an Ellen D nurse at Alta Bates, and she delivered, helped to deliver a baby at age 23. So we're doing good things here at Castro Valley. On the far left, you have Christian Decano. He is at UCUSF, excuse me. He's in the nursing program, and that is his first clinical rotation. These kids, you gotta meet them because they're going to be treating you someday. Thank you very much. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Also tonight, we brought with us the Program Director, Mr. Reese, for our automotive program.
Hello, I'm Darren Reese. I'm the CTE teacher, teaches automotive technology program at Castro Valley High School. The auto program is a auto pathway. We actually have a sequence of courses, Auto 1-2, which is the beginning entry level course. There's an advanced auto. And then students, if they're still interested as a possible career, they can move on to the ROP Center at Eden ROP and continue their development over there. The first course, Auto 1-2, is primarily around like entry level skills. You know, as we know, the transportation industry is, you know, incredibly important to our delivery of goods, as we found out during COVID, when, you know, we didn't have toilet paper. How important is it to keep the wheels turning? Anyway, the first semester in Auto 1-2 is, they earn some industry certificates. They get some OSHA-approved safety courses, industry certificates that they could use on job applications, things like that. They get lift certified. Really, they learn the skills they need the first day on the job, if they were actually going to follow that as a career. Second semester, we move on to engines, electronics, and I actually touched on a little bit of welding skills to inspire them in other possible careers that could branch off. And right about that time, I bring in a bunch of guest speakers, work on our work-based learning, bring in the, this year, we've had the sheet metal union, we've had the electricity union. We've talked about automotive apprenticeships. We also have some of the schools in. We're articulated with Chabot College. We've gotten C through G approved with universities. We're also articulated with Universal Technical Institute. So students that are interested in going on, Universal Technical Institute will actually give them $1,000 credit, and then they get credit towards their first course. They don't have to take the intro class. Recently got an award for the curriculum that, there's a picture of us getting the award there for having the curriculum matched or superseded their entry level course. And so it felt good to get recognized for at least being on focus, right? Next slide.
I get it. Very few auto programs left in the state. We're privileged just to have one of them and to be led by someone so incredible as Mr. Reese. It's where employers go to look for employees, is the Castro Valley High School Auto Program. And we're really proud of the work that he does, but also all the students that do and go through the program and all the connections that are made for students. Thank you.
As you can see, we have much to be proud of at Castro Valley High School. It is the work of every single staff member at Castro Valley High School. It is the care of the custodians to the counselors. It is the steadfast dedication of our school community. It is all of this and more that allows us to excel. But it is also the stewardship of the school board that lights the path forward, and of course, the fearless and focused leadership of our superintendent, Arvina Amari, who walks the path with us. CVHS is grateful for your leadership and your fidelity to our vision and mission. Thank you. No.
So we have a couple of recognitions. If you want to take pictures, please feel free to come up and take them wherever you'd like. Get the best angle.
So I have the privilege of recognizing Adora Bailey. Adora, I'd like to welcome you up here. Now, before I get started reading this list of all of Adora's accomplishments, I just want to say I've had the opportunity to perform in four shows with her during our time at CVHS, so I, sure, yeah. So I can personally attest to her talent as an actor and also her kindness and compassion as a student and a person. Without further ado, the governance team, along with Castro Valley High School, are proud to honor Adora Bailey. Adora has attended CVUSD schools since kindergarten, excluding one semester spent at a private school. Her passion is acting, which she first discovered during COVID when CVHS did an outside performance of Our Town. Adora has been a competitive dancer for nine years. After an injury, she used her experience as a dancer to and transitioned into stage acting. Adora has performed in a number of productions, including a traveling production of Brown versus the Board of Education. She was the only non-adult in the cast. This was an eye-opening experience for her, as it was her first paid acting job, and she learned so much about the Brown versus the Board of Education case. She has traveled as far as South Carolina for auditions and works with a professional acting coach. Adora plans to attend the Academy of Arts College, to university, sorry, to pursue her dream of becoming a professional actor. Adora says that the support and resources she has received at CVHS have been wonderful. She says her parents tell her, "I am the perfect Adora," as she does not see challenges as barriers or obstacles, but as strength and confidence she uses to map her own journey.
That's a quote.
That's a quote. The governance team joins Castro Valley High School in honoring Adora Bailey as an outstanding student. I've got the slow slack.
Adora, do you want to come to the mic? I know you have, yep.
Okay, wait, I don't know where to put all this stuff.
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
Uh, so do I do the monologue thing now?
Yeah, feel free to do the monologue and then introduce your family after.
Okay, well, I assume I don't have to fill out the blue paper in the back, so I'll just start talking. I'll be performing a monologue from Hidden Figures. It's a story about hidden figures during the NASA program and what they went through. And you guys seen the movie, most likely. So I'm going to be doing the coffee pot scene. My name is Adora Bailey, and I hope you enjoy. You enjoy. Wow, okay. There is no bathroom for me here. There is no bathroom. There are no colored bathrooms in this building or any building outside the West Campus, just half a mile away. Did you know that? I have to walk to Timbuktu just to relieve myself, and I can't use one of the handy bikes. Make sure that happens to person. My uniform skirt below my knees, my heels, the simple string of pearls world. Lord knows you don't pay colors enough to afford pearls. And I work like a dog, day and night, living off of a coffee pot. So excuse me if I need to use the restroom. And I guess I'll also introduce my family. That's my mom. She's my rock. That's my dad. He's my, I don't know, I don't want to say rock again, so I'm going to say boulder. So it would be redundant. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Adora.
All right, good evening. It's my privilege and pleasure to present this honor to Talia Bennett for being a, you can come up and join me, yeah, please. All right, so the governance team, along with Castro Valley High School, we are proud to recognize you for your service to the high school community. Talia Bennett is the executive director of an Oakland nonprofit and the mother of a CVHS junior. She has worked in the nonprofit sector for the past 15 years and enjoys grant writing, mentoring our youth, and is also a minister at the BB Cathedral Church. Talia has graduated Skyline High School in Cal State East Bay. She is a member of a local NAACP chapter, the Oakland African-American Chamber of Commerce, and mental health awareness advocate. Her professional mission is to help underserved youth realize their, excuse me, realize their value and gain importance life skills to become contributing and successful members of society. Ms. Bennett has been an active participant on our African-American Parent Advisory Council, the School Site Council, a CVHS classroom presenter, and a proud track mom. Importantly, Ms. Bennett knows the importance of supporting all aspects of a student's well-being. She is an advocate of the CVHS Wellness Center and the many wraparound services that they can provide. She commends the CVHS staff for the work that they do, especially in mediation and conflict resolution. Governance team joins Castro Valley High School in recognizing Talia Bennett as Volunteer of the Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just so wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you to the board for the work that you all do, Superintendent, the advocacy in the work that you do. To Castro Valley, our current principal, our former principal, thank you for your diligence and your hard work. And to Ms. Anderson, thank you for inviting me to present to your students. Dr. Fields, all that you do to hold us down. And I have to say, I am just so grateful for the Wellness Center. I want to also acknowledge Mr. Baker. And I think it's Luna. This is Luna, Ms. Luna. As a parent, you know, parents can be a little crazy, and we sometimes forget our children, our teenagers, and they get into things, and they're not this cookie cutter, perfect child. And sometimes when parents call, the principals or the teachers with our passive-aggressive emails or phone calls, messages that we leave for you all, you have handled it so beautifully. You don't go off and say, "You are crazy," and your child, "I'm trying to get this child out of here." And so I just thank you for being kind and tolerating us and helping to get our children off to college, because we wouldn't be able to do it without the rough moments, the conflict resolution, the mental health advocacy, and especially how you all help our African-American students, and you acknowledge all that we have going on. And so I just appreciate it, and this is a surprise, and it's just lovely, and thank you. And I have a little picture because I got to show this all.
Thank you, board. That's our presentation for this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Principal Fortenberry. Don't go too far.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I know we might have some questions and some comments from the board, so just want to make sure we give the board an opportunity. Hold on, I have to use your new title, Student Board Member Hanson.
Thank you, yeah. I just want to say, Adora, everything you do is amazing. You're amazing, and you absolutely 100% deserve this award. Be proud of yourself, parents. Be proud of Adora. Ms. Bennett, I really like what you said about parents being crazy sometimes. My mom, she's actually in the audience over there, so she's not crazy. I just want to say that for the record, but everything all the teachers and administrators do at the high school to work with parents and work with students is really great. So thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Fortenberry, for being an amazing principal and for the amazing presentation. Thank you.
Trustee Raymond?
Just very briefly, I want to say, Adora, I saw you in the production of, I think it was, was it Radiant Girls this fall? Fantastic. So yeah, good job. And this was really wonderful to see you so up close. You really embody the character really, really well. I was a college theater major, so I relate to that. And Ms. Bennett, I also want to echo Student Board Member Hanson's comment about, you know, yeah, as parents, like we can get crazy sometimes. And we always have these opportunities to stop and kind of reflect on just like how, how does, how is it to collaborate as a parent, you know, with our teachers and with our administration? And it's just, it's really wonderful when, as a parent, as I've got a ninth grader at the high school too, so I'm a little familiar with some aspects of this. But it's, it's just really nice to have that collaboration now. And so thank you for everything that you do for students and for that spirit of collaboration with students and parents.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. Amy, can we allow trustee Adams to speak, please?
Oh, hi. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to thank Mr. Fortenberry and the other people there for putting a focus on CTE, the medical careers one and two, and the auto program. I think maybe people sometimes don't realize, you know, that we have excellent programs at Castro Valley High in the CTE program. And also note, you know, that CBEF does have like a, there's a CTE scholarship to apply for, for anybody, and then accredited program. So I wanted to mention that. And super cool about how like in auto, you know that everybody won't necessarily stay in auto, and you're showing them also, you know, about And you're showing them also, you know, about welding and sheet metal and just so many other types of really good jobs that are careers that require all of these skills. I want to really thank Adora Bailey. I think, I don't know what to say. You're just, what a wonderful person. How lucky we are to have you here at Castro Valley Unified. Keep up what you're doing. I, you know, the dance, the drama. Yeah, you're terrific. And thank you very much, Tayla, Ms. Bennett, as well for all of your work at Castro Valley High. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Trustee Howard.
What's nice to see, hear your report. It's a great report. And it's also nice to see a lot of people here who I've known for quite a while in the room. So that's great. And great subjects too. I mean, career education is really important to all of us. I mean, we got some great things going at the high school. We also have some great things going over to Aiden Area ROP. That's fabulous. And you know, the, the nursing, I'm married to a nurse, I should say. And so it's a great career and there's a nursing shortage. So anybody who gets into that now is going to be, it's going to be easy for them to get a job pretty much anywhere they want to go. And finally, congratulations to Talia. It's terrific. Thanks for all the work you did at the high school. And to Adora and the Bailey, Bailey family, Adora, congratulations, you know, good luck with your career. I think you got a real, real shot at it. So, so thanks for performing for us for a little bit. Congratulations to your family too. Thank you.
Vice President Kuziak.
Mr. Fortenberry, thank you so much for the presentation tonight. I was reflecting on our strategic directions up there because what was highlighted tonight, I really, really think speaks to how we wanted to look for all of our students, right? And the career opportunities they may have. And it really is an inclusive way of demonstrating that. I often hear anecdotally, you know, high schools just focusing on getting kids just into college. And we clearly are doing a lot to support a lot of career pathways. And clearly that's amazing. I wonder where the cars come from. And I wonder if you can fix my tires. But it really, I've seen the program there and it's really fantastic to see. So thank you for highlighting that part of the high school journey, Talia. I think I'm on the verge of like losing it with you. I really loved your expression as a parent, as a parent of a 14 year old and a 12 year old, almost freshman at Castro Valley High School. Thank you for all that you've done. I loved your monologue. I, I grew up in Virginia, in the Hampton Roads area where Langley is based, where Hidden Figures is based. And I was thinking of the song by Pharrell, Running, that was used in the background of the movie. And that was used during those scenes when she was running around Langley. And it was such a close, that movie was really healing for me. It was the winter of 2017. I'll let you deduct what was happening around then. And for me, it was just so much my local history, where I came from, the teachers in my classroom who had lived through that period. And I just want to thank you for bringing that to life and, and sharing your talents with us. You're going to go places. And thank you so much that you started here in Castro Valley with us.
Superintendent Amadi.
Yeah, I just first and foremost, I really want to say thank you to the Castro Valley High School staff. Castro Valley High School just rocks. The teachers that spoke tonight were amazing. You know, auto shop, medical career. It's just, it's not what they do, it's how they do it, right? You walk into their classrooms and you just see the love and, and just the energy that they spent with kids to make sure that they learn, but they're engaged. And this is something that they really want to come back to every day. And, and I think everyone talked about the importance of CTE and, but all these options. One thing I noticed about Castro Valley High School, and it's really a reflection of the community, the students and the staff. Last year, when graduation, during graduation, you had listed like all the colleges that students went to. I have never seen so many different things kids do in so many different places. They go, what I love about Castro Valley and this community is everybody kind of thinks of what's best for them versus what everybody else wants them to do. So I love that. And of course, the monologue was absolutely beautiful. I had tears in my eyes because it was like we were watching the movie. You're amazing. We're so lucky to have you. And I did, I was so impressed with the, actually the play Radiant Girl. Guys were awesome. So thank you. And of course, Mr. And Mrs. Bailey, we know. You know, I want to thank Mrs. Bennett, not just for what you're doing here, but also your hard work around working with underserved youth. Because it's all about a community and whether it be here or anywhere else, it's so important to create that kind of community and make sure everyone is successful. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent Amadi. And I won't repeat anything that was said, but I just want to say a couple of things. Castro Valley High School has a place in my heart. My late husband, Dub Whittaker, used to teach there. And I've gotten to know many of you over the years. So I just want to say, Assistant Baker, Dr. Fields, Assistant, oh gosh, Hendy, sorry, I wanted to call you something else, but I'm not going to do that. Exactly. Um, just, um, no, I was going to call him by his first name, but I just, you know, it's not appropriate. And Assistant Principal Southern, I just want to say, the work that you do at the high school, it doesn't go unnoticed. That's, it's a very large school, 3,000 students, and you help hold the glue together. And Principal Fortenberry, I know you and Deb are really close friends and we're, you know, we've got in the back our, our friend from, from ROP with us tonight. So luckily to have you here as well. It's a special place where kids can find something that's important to them, regardless of what it is, right? They can find some kind of community that's important to them. And so I want to thank you all for creating that space. I also want to say, Talia, how humble do you have to be to come and get an award and come thank everybody else? I mean, just shows your character and how much you give back to our community. I mean, thank you very much. And you know, it's about you a little bit as well. So I want to say that. Dr. Reese, I was really excited to see that you were recognized by UTI. I don't know if everybody knows UTI is the number one school for fleet maintenance in the U.S. I mean, that is huge. So huge congratulations to you. And yes, I'm environmental health and safety dork. And I just want to thank you for teaching in pollution prevention and safety. That means a lot that our kids are going to be set up for success. And you know, the program that we talked about with nursing and emergency response, companies all over the Bay Area need employees to be able to respond to events. I mean, I see some opportunities. I'll talk to you offline. But we need to set our employees up for success. And if there's programs like this, you know, companies are looking for those kinds of things right out of the gate. So good, good opportunities. So I'm glad we're teaching our kids those things. And with that, I want to thank the high school for joining us tonight. We appreciate you joining us. And it, and we get to hear from our student board member about the happenings going on. So with that, thank you, Principal Fortenberry and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student Board Member Hanson, do you want to tell everybody what's going on?
I would love to. Around the district, the music programs from around the district performed at the annual It's a Rap Performance slash fundraiser last Friday, and that includes middle school, high school level orchestras and the choir programs there as well. Last month was the 100th day of school. Not sure what day it was specifically, but celebration nonetheless. Schools around the district are honoring Black history this month with various activities and games, classroom discussions, book reading lists and more. For example, the BSU club over at the high school is having a group discussion with Tyson Amir next week. February break is coming up fast, only 10 days away, 10 more days, just got to hang in there. The annual Canyon versus Creekside Flag Football Game is next week on February 16th. So you can come and watch the Condors defend their title of Champions of the Valley. This week is National School Counseling Week, and students are encouraged to write their counselors a nice note or stop by their office to say hi. Independent Elementary, along with other schools in the district, are a kindness certified school. They're joining over 19 million students in 115 countries that were part of the 2023 Great Kindness Challenge. And over at the high school, our choir pops concert is opening tomorrow. Pops will be performing Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Tickets are on sale at the CFA website. The Semester Two Dodgeball Tournament is happening this week. Over 20 teams are competing for the coveted Golden Plunger Trophy. Fun times over at the high school. The girls soccer varsity senior night was last Wednesday. The girls basketball senior night is tonight. And the boys basketball senior night is Friday. So we reluctantly say goodbye to all those senior athletes. Spring sports tryouts are happening, happened last week. Track, baseball, golf, swimming and softball had their tryouts. And finally, the class of 2025 is having a mod pizza fundraiser tonight. So if anyone's feeling hungry after the board meeting, go down and get some mod pizza. Support the class of 2025. Their flyer is on their Instagram account at CVHS Class of 2025. And the online code is modgives20. Thank you.
Thank you, student member, board member Hanson. Superintendent Amadi, our district report.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Number one, I want to just, you know, it's really important that we recognize this is, we passed a resolution, Black History Month. It is so wonderful to see there are so many activities happening throughout the school district, not just this month, all the time, and really recognizing the importance and the contributions of African Americans. But so on our website, there is a ton of information and resources that our coordinator, Ms. Eagles, has actually put together to share with staff and community. The other thing I wanted to talk about just a little bit is about professional development. On March 10th, we have our second professional development day. And it is the first part, this is in the past, we usually had professional development day, and it was mostly just certificated, like teachers and principals and administrators. And we've changed that. And this year we've had with support of our, our team here, Dr. Zamora and his team as well. We have all of our classified and certificated at the professional development day. In fact, there's so many cars that will need to be at the high school that we are getting buses to go to Creekside and Canyon and pick up the teachers and classified staff to bring them to Castro Valley High School. And what's important is everyone in our district is going through compassionate dialogue. And then the series after that, which is really important. I know a couple of you are attending that as well, our board members. One other thing that we are going to have in March, on March 30th, we're actually doing a session of compassionate dialogue for the community, for our community members, and we'll send something to the Community Alliance as well, but it'll be open to our whole community. As well as there is a book study that's going to start in April with adult school, and it's called Design for Belonging. So it's really about creating and maintaining this wonderful compassionate and supportive community where everyone feels valued and respected. And so we look forward to having as many people as possible join us. But I think the importance, I wanted to highlight the importance of professional development. Having time for our teachers on that day, they're actually doing compassionate dialogue as well as classified. The afternoon, they're working in their small groups and grade level and subject area in professional learning communities. So just time for them to, to actually work together and learn. So that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent Amadi. At this point in our board meeting, we will be taking a short recess for those of you who need to go home and do homework, maybe get some food in your stomach. We will come back at, let's give it 6:47. So next we have on our agenda, item eight, California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association. Do we have any members with us tonight? All right, we will move on to item nine. Are there any public comment for items not on the agenda? All right, we will move to the consent agenda.
A little approval of the consent agenda.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any further discussion? All right, student board member Hanson, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuzia.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes, so the motion passes six-zero. Thank you. Now we get to move on to our reports, discussion, and action items. And our first, I'm so excited, is Eden Area Regional Occupational Program. Superintendent Amadi.
Yes, Mr. Torpey, Superintendent Torpey.
Kind of awesome.
They call me Super Nintendo.
It's so awesome now that, you know, Mr. Torpey is in that position. So we get to be in superintendent meetings together, and I'm really, really proud of you.
Very, very happy to be here. It's been a pretty magical evening. I'll try not to get too emotional. The, the timing of Castro Valley High School being here was pretty, pretty sweet. The Eden Area Regional Occupational Program is, I'm a very honored and privileged to be a part of the organization. And, you know, our relationship between Castro Valley Unified and Eden Area ROP is really, really important. And I think one of the things that I like to talk about a little bit is that, you know, we each have a different path in life, you know, and often when we're trying to set students up, we kind of forget that. And, you know, it was mentioned earlier about all the pathways that we create. But that's what we try to do for our students. A little bit about the mission statement, we focus on professional skills, we focus on soft skills, academic skills, and technical skills. Just the facts, so we have partnership with four districts, we have Castro Valley Unified, San Lorenzo Unified, San Leandro, and Hayward Unified. We serve approximately four thousand eight hundred students a year. At the center in Hayward, we have twelve pathways, and across the districts at the high schools, there's twenty. Since nineteen seventy-one, we've served approximately two hundred thousand students, and we have some very top secret things. We have incredible programs for adults as well. So CTE is a course of study, and ROP is a place where we can do that. And so what it allows us to do is have, due to economies of scales, we can have incredible equipment for students. So for example, you're going to hear from one of our students who does welding, and we have every type of welding and tool that they need to be ready for a career. And so it's a pretty amazing experience for us to be able to be there for students like that. This is a selection of the programs that we have at the center in Hayward. So we have automotive collision, technology, careers in education, we have dental assisting, medical assisting. So many, many articulated pathways for students to get into, explore, sometimes they switch, and then they get to dig really deep. They get to be with us for three hours a day, often for two years. They, they stay with us for a full two years. Excuse me, um, the center, we serve twenty-eight students at our Hayward Center from Castro Valley High School and from Redwood. Students participate in work-based learning, so there's internships, guest speakers, field trips. And then they also participate in current technical student organizations, which develop leadership and gives them opportunity to participate in competitions at the regional, state, and national level, and we are national winners. Thank you. So Eden Area ROP at Castro Valley High School, you know, what you heard is a little bit about it today. You know, it was very sweet to, to hear Castro Valley High School's reporting, to hear about the medical careers and about auto. So we work closely with those teachers. We, we have our own teachers at Castro Valley High School. And so one of the things has been in that, you know, at that school for some time was the collaboration between the two organizations was really key. It was key financially, it was key in professional development, and it was also key in the vision of like, what do we want for our students? And I think that Castro Valley has been really, really clear about what it wants, so we're grateful for that. So we also, we manage applications for grants, implementation of grants, and that's one of the big services that we do our very best to provide for the school districts. The participation by industry sector, and this is from last year, so this is just students participating in CTE, not onsite, but just outside of the center at Hayward, and it totals one thousand one hundred and forty-three students. So, you know, the numbers, when you start to actually look into it, actually gets very impactful. Going back to the grants, in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, we brought Castro Valley Unified six hundred thousand dollars in the C-TIG grant, two hundred thousand dollars in the Strong Workforce Programs grant. We just were awarded another round for both of those grants, so the total for the C-TIG is three million, for the four districts, and for Strong Workforce is two million. So what that allows us to do is help develop pathways, implement new ones, reinforce the existing ones. When you look at, if you go into the auto shop at Castro Valley High School and you see the incredible lifts that they have, industry standard, that's part of our collaboration on the grants and the funding. Some great grants coming up soon that we're really excited about and looking to apply for. One of the neat ones that's happening is there's a push for apprenticeship in the state of California. So we're looking at pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs, and we're going to look to pilot our dental program. What that means is the work-based learning is going to move from an unpaid intern position into a paid apprenticeship or pre-apprentice position, which really puts students in a strong place to focus on their career goals. Talk fast, only because the best part is here, and that is actually hearing from Castro Valley High School students at the Eden Area ROP. Eugenie Bastidley is going to talk first about the medical programs, but I want to say part of that, the magical feeling for me is that I knew her when she was a freshman. When she came up, she said, my brother says you're okay. So it's touching to see her as a senior, just doing incredible work in medical careers. So please, Eugenie.
Afternoon, everyone. I'm currently a senior at Eden Area ROP and at CVHS, and this is my second year medical careers. I attended the first year on CVHS campus, and then I decided to take it second year on medical in ROP because it handed out more opportunities in more in a technical side. Because this second semester, I get to do an internship, and Eden Area ROP actually is one of the few programs within the Bay Area that allows teenagers under the age of eighteen to work in a medical setting. And being in an internship, not being like, yeah, having the certification. But at the end of this program, I will be clinically and administratively certified as a medical assistant. And the ability to be certified in both areas is actually a big factor in employment. So I'll be able to get employed faster, and through ROP is actually help me closer to my goal because I do want to be a nurse. So getting a head start in the medical field a lot faster, even before the age of eighteen and gathering like clinical hours and both, in both sides of the sector is actually very beneficial for me and just for my cycle. But a lot of benefits for the medical careers program is we learn a lot of hands-on skills and a lot of professionalism. I've noticed through internship, something that we don't notice is how hard to talk to a patient is, especially if you're like a kid, and you're like, they don't know you, you don't know them. But a lot of the mentors at ROP like teach you a lot of like one-on-ones, one-on-one skills and people skills.
Thank you, Eugenie. And then a quick word about Bryce. So he's going to talk about the welding program. And last year, before any of us knew that I was going to get to go work with the ROP, he wrote me a scathing letter about how Castro Valley High School wasn't getting the word out about ROP enough. And he was doing a paper about it, and he wanted an interview, and he had questions, and so I got to write him back. And then I got to, to meet him this year and spend some time with him. So Bryce.
My name is Bryce Walls, and I'm currently a senior at Castro Valley High School. This is my second year doing ROP and currently in welding technology, too. I think, I don't think I would be nearly half as successful of a person if I didn't have ROP as an opportunity. ROP allows us to work with, you know, thousand-dollar machines and stuff, thirteen thousand dollar machines. In fact, we would have never been able to have access to otherwise. I get to work with plasma cutters and, you know, top-of-the-line drill presses, and I get to learn all three welding processes in different positions, earn certifications, and the troubleshooting of machines and all this information and skills that I accumulate builds the value for me as an employee to be able to make money and succeed in the future, which I think is an extremely important thing. I'd like to say that I don't think, I think at Castro Valley High School, at least from what I've heard and from what I've seen, given the fact that we only have about thirty-some-odd students going to ROP this year, which is about one percent of the school's population, I feel like we don't really provide a lot of support directly for ROP as an option. We don't really hear about it very much, and my brother, who has graduated a few years past, just tells me like all the time, he's like, oh, man, this is a really great thing you found. So glad, because I don't think, you know, I necessarily would have been able to, you know, find a way to succeed after high school without it. And he just says he wishes he knew about it at the time as well, because maybe he'd be in a different financial position as well now in his twenties or whatever, if he had all those skills that he could have gotten for free back during high school. I think, especially from all these kids that I've seen in Hayward and stuff, a lot of them just don't really find a good, like, way to work through like an academic setting. A lot of them are extremely intelligent or, you know, like socially capable of working with people really well or learning skills, have really good work ethic, very physically strong people that just simply can't sit down in a classroom and find success in that. And I think it's a good thing that they get an opportunity to be taught skills that'll allow them to make money in the future.
Thank you, Bryce. So I think the, the, what I would like to close on is that, you know, what we know from our own life experience, from hearing from our students, that, you know, we together create these pathways, and it's our relationship that's the key that opens the doors for these students. And so I want to thank you for that support, and thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight.
Do we have board comments, questions? Student board member Hanson.
My only comment would be, well, first Bryce, the ROP presentation is included in our programming presentations over at the high school, so I'm sure it's changed a little bit. And just that ROP is a great program. Annie right over there, she's interested in being a hygienist, and she was looking into ROP. And it turns out she can get five or six certificates that she needs and maybe even jump into an internship straight out of high school, which is a great thing and a great path and a great alternative to, you know, spending a whole bunch of money at a university and maybe going into career that you don't really enjoy. And so it's great to hear your experiences over there. Superintendent Torpey, great job. I'm sure you're doing great. You're a great principal. But it's just an amazing program you got over there, and nice job.
Trustee Raymond.
Hi, good evening. So thank you for coming tonight. I, Bryce, I just wanted to say that you're obviously a really strong advocate for ROP, which is fantastic. Obviously, you know, advocacy is a skill in, in and of itself. And so I think that if you can continue to inspire people through your own voice and action, you know, that will obviously help. But if there's anything that, you know, the district could be doing to help promote these programs, I'm sure many of us would love to hear your thoughts as well. And I got to visit ROP last week. Was it last week? It was last week. And Superintendent Torpey was kind enough to show me around. It was with Trustee Howard, the two of us came to visit. And it was, it's just really a fantastic place. You guys have an incredible resource at your, at your hands, which you two obviously know, and I'm sure the rest of the students obviously know. And I think I share your wish to make sure that people really understand what it's all about, you know, and what it's offering. So, you know, consider me an advocate as well, you know, for the programming that, that is taking place there, both onsite and on our campus as well. Because I think that more than ever, we are clearly at a time in our society where having real tangible skills is something that's kind of disappearing a little bit and not, it doesn't have as much value as, or social value maybe, but its importance is clearly as big as it's ever been and, and needs to remain magnified. And so our schools, I'm really glad we, we do this, and I'm really glad that we have these opportunities available for students. So, yeah, great work.
Trustee Adams.
Oh, hi, Prince, Superintendent Torpey. I just wanted to say I personally, you know, support ROP wholeheartedly. I know you're doing a really important job for the four districts that you serve. It is really great to see all of the CTE-type classes that are being taught right at Castro Valley High. And those are really terrific. I would love to see there's, you know, there's a lot of advocacy for going to college, going to college from teachers and schools and things like this, but that just isn't for everybody. And many kids would be just much more well-served if they could get themselves on a career path or at least try to learn that maybe that isn't their career path, but give it a shot while they're still in high school. So I would love to see, you know, more kind of like advertising and that kind of thing, advertising, you know, I mean, in, in the schools for people to take a look at CTE or try out a class and see if they like it. So congratulations, of course, to Eugene and Bryce, what wonderful students that you brought up here. They, they obviously know what they're doing and where they're going, and at such a young age, it's absolutely amazing. Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
Well, I'm a huge fan of ROP and have been for a very long time. And I think it's a great program and I really like what you said here tonight. You're serving a lot of our students and giving them opportunities and options in life. That's terrific. So you talked a lot about students and gave us a lot of good information there about the number of, you know, four thousand, some five thousand roughly students served each year and everything. But I was wondering if you could tell us about how many adults you're serving and about the adult program a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. So the adult program, we have electrical electrician program. So if someone wants to get started in being an electrician, there's a day program. We run two cohorts a year, about forty students each, and it's a twenty-week program. We also have dental assisting, medical assisting and welding. So it's about two hundred and fifty adults a year. They're all full. We have wait lists. It's almost a hundred percent higher rate out of the programs. It's a really, really an amazing program. And when thinking about, so for example, if somebody wanted to become a dental hygienist, you know, you can go to some of the private universities, pay twelve thousand dollars for a ten-month program or do it with us in a twenty-week program for less than two thousand dollars. So I really appreciate the service that it provides to the community for young adults and people looking to change their career.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Vice President Kuziak.
I just want to thank our students for being here and giving us context. Hearing this is how we learn as trustees and I'm really excited to hear what your intentions are. I, I work for the University of California. I think about what happens in the research lab and a lot of folks don't appreciate like how welding is a very important thing in fabricating different scientific equipment, for example. So I think there's a bright future for, for what both of you are studying at ROP. I have two questions, Superintendent Torpey. You know, Bryce brought up the point about 1% of Castro Valley High School being ROP, but you also pointed out that ROP supports other programs at our high school. So maybe if you could just give us, do educators talk about what we think, you know, what percentage of our students should be involved in a program like this? And then my second question is just simply, how do we figure out what the equilibrium is based on what, what should be based at our high school versus what should be at ROP? And when do you think sort of like there's economies of scale? So what happened over here? And maybe my last question would be, do we bring students from other districts? Is there sort of, can you get to other high school sites within our, our area for a program? I know, that's what I do.
So let's start with the last one. There are ROP models where students actually move through school districts. And so actually they don't have a center. They have programs at high schools and then students can go around there. So, you know, definitely a possibility. I think for us, it's a logistical challenge with the distance between the high schools. The, you know, when it comes to, you know, deciding what the equilibrium and the balance is, I think it has a lot to do with the facility needs, you know, so for example, you know, for welding, you know, it's almost three classrooms. It's like a warehouse. It would be very difficult to put that on a high school site if it's compacted. So I think really that has a lot to do with it. Has a lot also to do with the, for us at ROP is the ability to develop the programs. So I think that, I think the balance is kind of an organic one and it really depends on the specific district. You know, because then we also work with districts that have multiple high schools that have different needs, different, different identities. So, and it's interesting that the differences between what they do and what the student at that school are interested. So I think it's organic. I don't think there's really an equation for it. And I forgot the first question.
Bryce was mentioning 1% of our high schools involved in the ROP. So should, and clearly again, that, that we have CTE happening at our high school as well. So there's probably more students engaged, but should, should there be, should we be 2%, 3%, 10%, right? Oh, ooh, we have an answer.
Was contemplating in junior year whether to do ROP or not. A lot of people were hesitant to do ROP because one, like it takes up three classes. And I feel like people don't understand what, how much value you actually gain from those three classes compared to one class. So I feel like there should, like a lot of people from my, from my understanding, for instance, in the medical sector, they're so interested. They take medical careers and they want to like build on top of that, but they're too scared. From like, from a lot of people that I've surveyed, they're just too scared to give up those three classes. So I think like a good organic way is like possibly is like introducing what like actual skills that you would do at ROP, but in a classroom and then see, and then like show it to them. This is what you would do at ROP on a daily. Because like in medical careers, there's so much you do at ROP, like EKGs and all of that, but we don't, there's no equipment on school campus. So you could do that. I would be able to teach as soon as that. So when people are like exposed, like this is what you do at ROP through like the equipment that is provided, people are more like, they're interested in that. Yeah, that's just my intake from a student standpoint.
When I go into the medical class, they make me take my blood pressure every day. I think that, you know, to Eugenie's point, that often, you know, it's in the course catalog, it's shared by counselors, we have flyers, we have more tours, we have a public relations specialist who's doing TikTok now. But I think it's getting that message across like what it, what it really is. And it's hard to capture that. You know, our students do a fantastic job of it and they are the voice that we really count on to get the word out. But to have a student understand what that means, you know, there's kind of a developmental readiness. I think that is also.
So.
All right. I'm just wondering, do we have any summer enrichment programs around this or opportunities in the summer to get students engaged?
Pandemic, we did, we actually had started a summer program that brought high school students, middle school students to ROP and then brought high school students to ROP then to Chabot. So they were taking early, early college classes that were.
I just want to make a few comments. First of all, I think we really need to shift our thinking and instead of saying either or, like college isn't for everyone. You're either, it's actually either and. It doesn't mean that Bryce isn't going to college after this. In fact, if he decides to go, he already has a career and he can pay for his college. It's really about, and our goal is always to prepare kids ready to go to college if they choose to. And if we don't have that attitude, we will then get back to where we were many years back where certain students were always assumed to go to college and certain students were not assumed to go to college. So it's really important that language is really important, that it's either and. Going to ROP doesn't mean that you don't go to college, but it also means if you don't decide to right now and later on you want to, you can. A couple of other things I, I wanted to make mention is I think it's a shift in the culture. Just in general, for example, you know, when Bryce was talking about welding and the equipment and Eugenie was talking about the equipment. If you live in Germany and you go to high school, you actually get to work on Mercedes and BMWs, millions of dollars of equipment as a part of your high school career. So it's, it's really a big shift and I, I, the, the fact that we have a center is amazing. So in other districts, for example, Tri-Valley, Pleasanton, Dublin, Livermore, they don't have a center. So they would love to have one, but they don't. And we're really lucky to have one. And that's why they kind of go around. So they don't get to have the kind of equipment that you have. Last thing I want to say, welding. It's, so I usually don't talk about my children, but I, I have one of our sons, one is a mechanical engineer. But his love is welding. So after he works at this not very famous company in Fremont, but Tesla, but after work, he goes and that's what he does. He has a startup with his friend. It's a machine shop. It's, and, and he loves welding. And where he learned is where he was actually going to school at UC San Diego for mechanical engineering and aerospace. He got to work in the machine shop. And his dream is to have his own machine shop. So it's like all of it, like being just exposed to all of this is so important. So he designs and then they make it. So I have to have him come because he'll probably be drooling if he sees the equipment you have at ROP. Yeah. But thank you so much. It's just an amazing program. We have an amazing superintendent. And I'm just really thrilled to, to, to see what's happening with ROP. Great job, you guys. The two of you did a beautiful job.
Trustee Adams, your hand is still up. Did you have another question?
Oh, I did. And I'm sorry, I forgot to lower the hand. Everything's good.
May I say a couple of things? Thank you, Superintendent Torpey. One other thing that I wanted to just, I know you mentioned it and the periphery of the, the, the different businesses that you coordinate. You also coordinate with unions, don't you as well? And so I just want to, you know, our, our union counterparts, I want to thank them for their participation and engagement. And Bryce, I want to thank you for speaking up. I think it takes a lot of courage to do that and I just want to thank you for that. Welding is one of the highest paid jobs. It's union. They send you all over the place if you want. I mean, it pays very well. People don't understand how well union folks get paid. I used to work for a large utility that shall not be named, that's local. And the dollar value, I mean, people were making two hundred, three hundred thousand plus a year in the union. I mean, you make as much as a lawyer, you know, like people don't realize how much you can make. And, and skilled trades, I mean, building bridges, homes, all kinds of things that we need in our society. We don't think about on a, on the general. And Bryce, thank you for going for one of the jobs that we really need. And watch out for that acetylene. It's very scary. And then Eugenie, I just want to thank you. You know, you mentioned something about what you're learning and how to work with patients. Patient outcomes are so driven on how well they receive care. So I'm so glad that you're going to be helping whoever you help out in our community have better health outcomes. So thank you for caring so much and dedicating your life to helping others. I mean, we need more of that in the world. So I want to thank you for that. And I was going to call you by your first name, Superintendent Torpey. I'm so sorry. You know, we were lucky enough to have you as a teacher here at Castro Valley. We were lucky enough to have you as a principal. And we're so lucky to continue our partnership with you at the ROP program. We're, I, I mean, I am personally so proud of you and I know Nick would be too. So thank you. We will move on to our next agenda item, our CVUSD English Language Learner Program update.
It's my pleasure to introduce our brand new, she joined us, she's actually been here at adult school, but we were lucky to steal her to be our coordinator of English learners program.
It wasn't an either or, it was either. With the ESL program. Good evening, everyone. World trustees, superintendent, school leaders, families, students. My name is Guillmina Gutierrez and I am the EL Coordinator for Castro Valley Unified School District. I've had this amazing job for six months only, but I've, I've been in EL or English Language Learners Education for my entire career. It's about thirty-three years. I have been an English learner for about, since nineteen seventy-nine, when I came from my home country and was transplanted to in the Bay Area. So thank you. I have been asked to speak to you about that particular group of students that we have in Castro Valley and I thank you for that. So tonight I have three objectives. One is to quickly go over the laws that have prevailed in terms of supporting our EL learners. Two, I would like to bring you up to date on the data of our EL students. And the third objective that I have tonight is to shed the light on one specific group of students that is really dear to my heart and I'm really trying to get them through their education pathway. So the history of schooling second language learners in nineteen seventy-four, a group of parents sued the San Francisco Unified School District. They alleged that their students were being denied for access to their education because they did not speak English well. The court ruled that the students' civil rights were violated and that it didn't matter how well they spoke English, they needed full access to the curriculum. Then in nineteen seventy-six, Assembly Bill thirteen twenty-nine became the pathway, the gateway to bilingual education in California. His son said it in nineteen eighty-seven. And in nineteen ninety-six, we were given the first assessment. So it took those many years to create the first assessment to really measure how much English students are learning at school. That assessment was called the self-assessment. It has now been changed to the L-PAC. I'll be talking a lot about the L-PAC later today. And then in nineteen ninety-seven, Prop two twenty-seven really ended bilingual education. So that was last century. Luckily, we came into the new century. So in twenty-twelve, it was California, despite the fact that it wasn't a formal support. The state that conferred the first seal of by, by literacy. We have that in Castro Valley as well. And then in twenty, to twenty sixteen, over seventy-three percent of California voters said yes to Prop twenty fifty-eight. And you know that, that proposition really and truly authorized school districts to establish language acquisition programs for both native and not native English language speakers. And it requires school districts and county offices of education to solicit parent and community input and developing programs for language acquisition. Then in twenty seventeen, California adopted as a policy the California English Learner Roadmap. This roadmap includes four principles that are pretty heavy. So I'm going to, rather than going quickly through four, I'm going to emphasize one. But I have linked the full report, the full program in the presentation and I invite you all to take a look. And I picked the principle that I know is Castro Valley totally aligns with this principle. We do well in all four. But I feel that principle one, where we really see our students' assets is the one that really shines in Castro Valley. So I'm going to start with students are assets. They come to inclusive, affirming and safe institutions. That's our schools. I'm going to jump to students receiving special education. As you know, students with IEPs have a formal meeting every year to see where their goals are. And one of the things that we now do is we really look at language. And we look at how developed that language of that student is in order to form their IEP goals over the upcoming year. I think it's really, really important because many of our students are not progressing, not because they don't speak English, they do. But their processing issues, the reason for which they are receiving special education is what's keeping them from moving forward. So that is finally being paid attention to, which I'm very happy about. The one thing that we do beautifully and have really grown, I think, this year is in our family engagement. We have a new community liaison and she has developed non-conventional ways to reach out to our English language, our EL parents' population. So we have traditionally always engaged parents through Parents Square or any other platforms. And we have found that many times our EL population is not accessing that for many reasons. And so our community liaison has really focused on that personal connection with the families. So we have had three main meetings, pases unidos at the elementary school level, and we have had many families attend those meetings. We have had our D-LAC meetings with a lot more participation this year and that's all due to really the personal touch and the personal connection with our EL families. We are expecting to have our D-LAC members vote for their first board, which I'm really happy about. And we should probably be presenting them to you towards the end of this year. So I, that principle one, seeing families who come from other countries seeking not only a better life, but really a way to thrive in this and this new country is totally aligned with principle one in our learners' roadmap. So that is why I wanted to emphasize, I will now go through the other three principles. Because I really, this presentation is heavy on numbers and I'd rather go and look at the numbers that we have and the special population that I was speaking of earlier. And I will invite you to look, take a look at that roadmap on your own. That's your homework for tonight. All right. So who are these, these people and how do we know they are English language learners? So when we enroll students in any school in California, we ask the parents to fill out a home language survey. The students are. The students are asked a few questions. And we deduce by the answers of the questions whether or not these students speak another language at home, or adults in their home speak other languages. And if the answer is yes, we have thirty days to assess them with an initial test. Upon assessing the students within thirty days of enrollment, we typically, two things happen. Sometimes the student is fluent in whatever language they speak at home and also English. Those students are placed in classrooms with no extra English support, just regular classroom. But a good number of students are learning English. They don't have enough language to really thrive in school, and we then have them be in a regular program but with English language support. And we call the English language learners, the ELS. We then assess them yearly with a summative test, usually in the spring, we're getting ready to do twenty twenty-three L-PAC testing. And they take this test as long as it takes until they are ready to reclassify, which means they have proven that they have enough fluency in their English to be able to just maneuver their way through school without any language issues. We do have, however, and a small fraction of the population where summative assessment, six years plus, and the students are not reclassifying. They are not proving to the testers that they are ready, that their language has developed enough for academic, for the academics, the rigorous of academics, especially in the middle and high school. And we term those students long-term English language learners. And these students disengage, they're not excited, and this is why, because if you have not reclassified by middle school, then you have to take twice the English, sometimes three hours of English. And so if you do that, do the math, you're not going to be taking the fun classes that kids go to school for. And so that special population that we are speaking of tonight really needs our support so that we can propel them into reclassification so that they can access the full fun curriculum in middle and high school. So who are we schooling in Castro Valley? So this graph shows us population as a whole, we have close to ten thousand students, fifty, ninety, ninety-six hundred, more or less. And out of that many students, sixty-six are English-only speakers. But thirty-four percent of Castro Valley schools are second language learners. That's one third, a little bit over a third of the population that speak other languages at home. Now, the beauty of this is, we have thirty-four percent of students who are second language learners, who are English language learners. And fifty percent of those students thrive, learn English, and continue on their growth. So the yellow piece of the pie is exactly half of our ELS. Seventeen percent of our population, but half of the ELS. And our teachers do that work. They teach, we continue to support, and the students reclassify at some point. Then the seven percent of the total population, which is twenty-one percent of our ELS, come to us already speaking English. Fine, they have maybe one or two languages at home, but they also speak English. They do not need any extra support. Then we have twenty-nine, twenty-nine, or ten percent of the whole population who are still learning English. As we speak, this is the data from last Friday. So this is pretty current data that we have here. And we were talking about home languages. We speak fifty-nine home languages. Fifty-nine. So of course, English only, we still have the majority of our families, but there's fifty-nine languages. We cluster all the languages and ninety-seven students, because some of the students are one or two students, so we just wanted to emphasize the languages that are most often spoken at home. So Cantonese, Spanish, and Mandarin are the three languages other than English that are spoken at home. Some kids are trilingual. Some kids speak Mandarin and Cantonese. Some speak Spanish and a native language of their home country. So we are educating students that are multilingual. This trend that I show you on this graph is just to give you an idea how our EL population has been growing. As you know, there were two years of pandemic. And it's kind of messy to look at graphs, they include those two years, but I thought it was still a good idea to show it to you so that you could kind of see that our EL population continues to grow. The orange is happy news, those kids are fluent. But the sad news is the gray area. And if you notice, that is the one that has grown the most. And so those are our long-term English language learners. Those are students who have taken this test six years, seven years, eight years, nine years, some of them are in high school, and they have not yet reclassified, which still keeps them from accessing the fun and middle and high school. And this is heavy to see, but important to recognize. I spoke about the L-PAC test earlier. This is the summative, this is the yearly test that our students take. Springtime is the time when they take it. And there are four domains, four types of, four domains of language that are assessed. Listening, speaking, reading, and writing. There are four levels that the students are able to attain, one, two, three, or four. In order to reclassify the student, the student must show proficiency in an average of four. And they also are tied to another criteria that we, the district, has created for them. And we can talk about that a little bit later, but I wanted you to pay attention to our graph shows from kindergarten through twelfth grade. And I want you to listen, to look at this graph right here. Seniors last year, forty-one percent of them were at level one. But I also want you to pay attention to the grade, because also at level three, a lot of our long-term English language learners get stuck at level three. So they are able to speak, they are able to understand English perfectly. Sometimes you don't know that they're still managing this other language, but when they have to read and write and get more highly cognitive assessments, it's difficult for them. So this is, I will come back and visit this again. This is not a complete graph, but I wanted to show you the reclassification by grade levels. The grade is still on the works. We're still receiving the form that says so-and-so has been reclassified. But I want you to pay attention to the blue and the green and look at the grades in which the kids are classified the most. And look at the grades where the kids get stuck and they don't reclassify. Earlier years, first, second, and third grade. Later in their career, it's a little bit more difficult. So so far, we talked about why we need to school our students, is the law. We have spoken about who is coming to school every day, what language they speak. We've spoken about what is this test, this L-PAC test that happens every year. And some kids have to take it again and again and again. And I just want to say something about the L-PAC test that our teachers discovered this year, because I have been really busy trying to send the message that we need to help these students. So the L-PAC test is exactly the same in first and second grade, exactly the same. The scale changes. Third, fourth, and fifth grade, exactly the same test. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, exactly the same test, and then high school, exactly the same test. So the question is, why are the kids not passing this test? So I just want you to think about this. It's exactly the same, same graphs, same everything. Our teachers discovered that this year, so I'm very hopeful that once we are beginning to look at this tool, that we're able to make some connections. And the roadmap that I shared earlier with you delineates clearly what are best practices when educating second language learners. And one of them is the Designated and Integrated ELD. And our teachers know the term really, really well. They know. I am a class teacher, I know I'm supposed to use some strategies to reach our ELS. But when they are put in in practice, they're having trouble. Designated ELD means you are at level one and two, I'm going to teach you, I'm going to work with you at your level. That is your designated time. Integrated time is supposed to happen all day. I know your level is low, I'm going to give you some scaffolds throughout the day so you can reach the curriculum. And that's the confusion that's happening in our classrooms right now. We are adopting culturally relevant curriculum, which I think Castro Valley is doing a much better job now. And the clear understanding of the tools used to assess English language learners specifically about domain-specific. So I said there are four domains in the L-PAC, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And I tell the teachers, language happens naturally. When you're a baby, you listen. That doesn't mean you're not understanding, you're listening to your mom speak to you. Then the next step is you speak. New newcomers, new people coming into this country to learn English is exactly the same, we're listening. Later, when we start to speak, reading and writing happens last. And our students get very proficient at domain one and two. Not so proficient at domain three and four, because it's really tricky to understand why that student who speaks English beautifully is not able to answer and to comprehend this text. It's a very complicated text. So those are the things that we need to really do. That we do sometimes in our practice. What we are going to do and what I am hoping to do next year is to conduct classroom visits to really see our teachers in action. They work hard. And if we give them the tools and we can come and check their practices, I think we can really put our ELS at a different level. Middle and high school, we really need to look at the designated ELD time. They have it. But I don't think we scaffold enough their content areas. So we still have to remember, I gave them, they went to their ELD class. Now they're going to math and science. How am I going to help them make meaning of what I'm saying if I know their language is limited? There are strategies that we need to, that we need to use. And we need to foster professional relationships with our county office. They are a great resource, great resource, and other districts are doing a pretty good job about having success with EL students, so we need to foster relationships with them as well. Those are, I believe, should be our next steps. What are we doing in our classrooms? This, as we speak now. As I said to you earlier, to become a long-term English language learner is six years of taking a test. By definition, very few kids in elementary school are long-term English language learners, right? Because they're in kinder, unless they went to kindergarten and they're in fifth grade and they're not reclassified, the pressure is on the middle school. Because most of them go to middle school without being reclassified. So we're creating a sense of urgency in the fourth and fifth grade classrooms particularly. So we're trying to see what's happening with our fourth and fifth grade students who have taken these tests since they came to TK or K, and they have not yet reclassified. The complexity of the test increases by third grade. The complexity of the test increases again in the sixth grade. So if we don't catch them early, it is really hard for those students to really later on reclassify. So we're trying to do that, we're trying to put timely interventions for them. And we're training our teachers to use the strategies and hoping to do more. They are willing, they're hungry for more information, we need to find the time to do that. And then middle school, we have a newcomers help, as you know, in Canyon Middle School. The students receive their designated time. And they also receive content area support. So the teacher keeps the students for their designated time, and then social studies and math support for those students. But that means the students are there for three hours. Right? Because they have to be there for three hours. So we're trying to create a system that will give them the support that they need, but also allow them to have the fun that they need to have in middle school. Same thing with the high school. We have ELD classes that are leveled, but we need to roster more carefully so that those students who have not yet reclassified have full access to the curriculum and to just to the fun of high school. The good thing that happens is we only have one counselor that serves all the EL learners. So it is really easy for just one person to to just inform and really care for those students. And a newcomer that comes, I can make a phone call and say, Miss Hee, we have a new family, and we have soft landing for that student. I said earlier that we have a graph that was concerning to me when I saw it, right? Look at the twelfth graders. Forty-two percent of them, level one, meaning they are only a little bit speaking, they're not they're not reading or writing English. So why is that? We have received, and we're not unique, a large number of students who are sixteen and seventeen, who need to be schooled from other countries. So they have to be at level one. But what do we do with them? They're not going to have time to have enough credits to graduate. We do have a credit reduction criteria that we can use, but despite that, we are not going, they're not going to have time. We allow them to stay a fifth year in high school, but they're still not going to have enough time to have a high school diploma when they walk away. So we are creating, and now that I heard the ROP, that's another connection we can make for those students. But we have, we're creating partnerships with adult ed so that we can guide them through. They have a GED program, they have a a high school diploma program with ESL support. So that would be the most wonderful place for this. Then we had about tens, ten, not too long ago, more, because we just enrolled a few more. So those students can be, again, have a pathway of success despite the fact that they will not be receiving a high school diploma. So those are the long-term English language learners, one section, and then these are the students who are not long-termers, but they have just arrived. And we are not going to have enough time to really do what we've done with fifty percent of the ELS, like you saw the pie before. Half of those students have no issues. Our teachers do a great job at getting them through the reclassification. All right, how do we invest in our English learners? We have purchased curriculum. And we have purchased digital platforms that are designed to really teach students the language. What do we still need to do is the training for our teachers. The platforms are there. Good amount of budget was spent on curriculum and platforms. So we need to make full usage of it. And so we are, the teachers are asking for the training, we're trying to find the time. I think someone spoke of PD Day. We already are taking part of that time to train our elementary school teachers in the importance of reclassifying by fourth and fifth grade. So that's kind of the title of our presentation for them. We're hoping to invite them so they can come and really understand the urgency. Our teachers do not assess the students. We are very supportive of our teachers. We send a team of testers to test the students, but you already know what happens. They don't know the tool that the kids are assessed with. And so if you happen to be a teacher, I was a teacher for fifteen years, it's difficult to know. And I'm not saying teach through the test. I'm saying it's difficult to know what to teach, especially English learners, when you don't know the tool that is being used to really make them successful. So that is what I had to say today, and I hope, as a teacher, I hope that one new learning, at least one, because that's my objective every day when I teach, that my students walk away with one piece of new learning. So I hope I did that for you tonight. And please, if you have any questions, let me know.
Student Board Member Hanson.
I just have a quick question regarding the high school English language learners. If the students, when they say a freshman or a sophomore, don't meet the standards and the tests and whatnot, how does that work with their schedules? Because I know when you're a freshman and a sophomore, you have to take six periods of classes in order to graduate, to have enough credit. So do they take those classes later as a junior? And does that, like you were mentioning, towards the end of the presentation, make it so that they don't graduate in four years and they have to continue on?
So for our students who start the journey as freshmen, that tends not to be the problem. They do, though, have to take like twice the English, because they have to the designated English time. And that takes away from maybe music or some art class that they would like to take. So the journey for kids who come in as freshmen is not so bleak, because they will have enough credits to graduate, because the classes, the ELD classes count towards graduation. Many of them don't count through AG requirements. So that's another thing that we need to look at, that we need to look into. But we do have, you have, many of your classmates are just arriving from other countries where there's a lot of turmoil. And they come in at sixteen or seventeen, so they won't have enough time. They're already juniors when they enroll. Does that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, and that actually was going to be my next question regarding the A through G. You mentioned that the students don't typically graduate with that, but are there some students who do graduate with A through G requirements? Those are a little bit more rigorous, so.
That is correct. Some of the ELD programs are articulated for AG, but many of them are not. And again, if you are receiving twice the English and one of them is not articulated, then for you to catch up is going to be difficult. So many of them, if they have, if then for you to catch up is gonna be difficult. So many of them, if they wanna do the college pathway, they're probably gonna have to go to a community college to make up for that time.
And then one last quick question. No matter where the students start, do you see students fully transitioning to regular classes by the end of their high school career? Or is it typically they're an English learner throughout their time?
It depends when they came in. So if right now, the issues that we're having is some of them are so well-integrated, the long-term English language learners are socially mobile. They're bilingual. They're cool kids. But the issue is they still have to take this other class. And yes, they're in P with you, they're in other classes with you. But they still have to go to that extra class. So we're trying to, we're trying to make an easier pathway for them, because we can. Many of them, this year, we had twenty students that were candidates for reclassification, so they no longer have to take this test. But we have a tough second criteria. So it's two criterias. One is that for by the state, you must have a overall of four on the LPAC. The second criteria is homemade. We made the criteria. Castro Valley has one of the toughest criterias.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
So that's where we can make a difference.
Yes.
If you really think about the whole idea that, you know, that a lot of schools had, there were barriers for kids to take AP courses. This is another one. I think it's something we are taking a look at. I want to say I'm one of those students. I came here as an English learner. And I came here as a high school student, not speaking a word of English. I knew how to read and write. But the English I learned was British English, so it was really hard for me to even understand. Wanna could, should, woulda. And in a place where I was the only foreign student at that high school in Ames, Iowa. So I get it.
That must have been.
And I think had I not had the designated ELD, even though it was just twice a week for me with a teacher I never forget from Cuba, who told us, don't be afraid that you have an accent. So, and then I, it's very difficult to be in an English class. But I aced my physics and calculus. So we have to remember that English learners have the cognitive skills. They have the ability, they just have to learn the language. And that's why I'm really excited about the work that they're doing to kind of change some of these things.
And if I can add to that. When you come older to this country, you just have to relabel things. You already have the cognition of understanding. You know, so the challenge is not so great. I came in also as a high school student. But I came to East Oakland, so it was very different, because we had schools that were intentionally, intentionally. And because I came during a lot of turmoil in the countries and many countries, there were a lot of us together. Vietnam, Southeast Asia, Central America, and Mexican kids have always come. But it was intentionally done designated time with content support. And that's what we need to do. We can do that. It's definitely doable.
And we have a few other questions. Trustee Raymond.
Thank you. Hi, I was interested in finding out a little bit more from you about the community liaison aspect of this program and how it, how this person works with families to help the students.
Let me actually, we had a presentation. I think it was like a couple of months ago. But it was really like thorough presentation. I'll definitely find it, find the YouTube and send it to you.
Thank you. But I can just say a few things about she is new. The position is not new, but she is new and her energy is unmatchable. And her intent to engage families is also unmatchable. And pair with me, who has the intent to really engage in authentically these families, which is part of the roadmap of success for EL learners. We just made a good team. So we use Parent Square as the regular way of communicating to parents. And then we learned that a lot of our families have no access to internet. Have no access, what, things that we would take for granted. It's a difficulty to the max to a newcomer, to a family who just arrived from Ukraine or from, we've received even from Peru, many families from Peru. So we fortunately are able to walk them through the first days of school. And we make that connection. And then later on, we call, check in, and they come to our meetings to get informed. And to really start making, being part of our community. So it's unconventional. The schools don't do that. But we've taken the, we've taken the extra step. Because we understand that this district is committed to be inclusive. And that is only part of the inclusion. We can do this with any communities, but we were charged with the EL community and that's how we do it. It does take a lot of effort and a lot of energy, but it's wonderful.
We'll definitely share it with you.
Trustee Adams.
Yes, I just want to say thank you. You're doing really a great job. I know when I was a very young beginning teacher, I didn't understand if a kid would listen to me and speak to me in English. I just assumed that they were proficient in English. Then you might ask them, oh, please write me a paragraph about your favorite science experiment or or your favorite science teacher. And they would sit there and they would like not do anything. And I'd be like, well, so what's up, you know? And it's because the reading and writing part had not come yet. They were proficient in listening and speaking, but not in reading and writing. And then as a special ed teacher, some years later, you talked about scaffolding. And some of that scaffolding that you do for special ed is often useful also for EL kids. So you can, of course, and I always have had, kids are both EL and sped. And so whenever you could make a visual, you know, like a picture is worth a thousand words. All right. Thank you so much for all the work you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Vice President Kuziyak.
Thanks so much for all the data. It really gave us a lot of context here and I appreciate that. I suppose my one question would be around the pandemic and those impacts. What do you need? It just seems like there's going to be an ongoing. It's not gonna be this year, next year. It's gonna be for a long time. Because keeping in mind that kids were disconnected to hearing the language being in an environment where they're hearing English. How are we going to navigate that? Is the ELOP program one of our helpful tools? Like, how are we going to overcome that?
My daughter teaches, I'm sorry.
No, I think there were groups of students who really COVID had a tremendous impact on. One is students with special needs. And the other one is what's really our English learners. Because they're, you know, when you're at school, you actually hear the language you get. So it's gonna take a longer time for both groups, but we've, and that's why we have the extra support and additional things that we need to really do to to make sure that they have the support they need. But it did impact them. I would say the impact on them was exponential.
And so we had our last Padres Unidos and it was on technology. And I had pulled some data and some research and, you know, it shows that families where English is not the first language were most challenged because of connectivity issues. By the time our districts found out and there were, you know, hotspots and this and that. It was, it was not too late. It's late better than never. But it did attract from, it did do a lot of damage to our kids. And I was gonna say, my my daughter is a fifth grade bilingual teacher in another district. And she tells me, Mom, what am I gonna do this year? And I said, remember, fifth graders, fifth graders, their crucial years, their foundational years were at home on Zoom. And these are all English language learners that she's teaching. I go, be patient. And I think that what we need to do is be patient with ourselves. And really understand that the great, of all the datas that I mostly agree with is that great data, that great align that I put on that. Because if you see that particular, the LTAL population went boom, it really expanded because our ELS and sped Ed students were the ones mostly affected. And families that don't have the means were just very affected.
We don't have any other questions. Want to thank you for your presentation tonight and the thoughtful work you're doing in our district to make sure we can lift our students up to help set them up for success. So thank you.
Well, thank you for listening. Thank you so much. I appreciate.
Thank you so much.
And our next item on the agenda is to review the governor's proposed 2023-24 budget. Assistant Superintendent Chan.
Thank you. Okay, so she's Sky Year is pulling that up. Okay, so as you know, heard, the governor unveiled his proposed budget for 2023-24. So I'm gonna go over just highlighting you know, changes or really the proposed budget for that impact, Castor Valley. So left, left, sorry. Okay. Okay, thank you. So the theme for the 2023-24, and as you can see, there's a lot of information here. It's also good for the public in case they want to take a look at the presentation, but I'm not gonna go over every single one, but I'll highlight a few things here. So the budget development is focused on business as usual, moving away from the COVID pandemic budgeting. A couple of things here that we just wanted to note. You know, the bad thing, right, what we see is the business as usual comes with softening economy, as we've seen the last year. One of the good things that we hear about and which is true, this is a year where California is really better prepared to weather the storm because of the investments that the governor has made. Putting a lot of money into the reserves during the good years. And we've had a couple of good years here. The, right now, the budget is focused on on more attention, actually, is on homelessness, housing and extreme weather, which, as you know, affect our students and our staff as well. So the budget is balanced. Just, but I will go through the reason why it's balanced, even though we are hearing that there is actually a shortfall, so. Here are some issues that we're dealing with with this proposal. It's the inflation, rising interest rates and supply chain issues that we continue to have. The, well, most of the economists are, you know, they believe that the mild recession will occur this year and next year. And you've heard about the 22.5 billion estimated gap in the state's general fund for the 2023-24. And so how he's balancing the budget for 2023-24 is really through funding delays, reduction, pullbacks. And again, I'm gonna go over that with the next few slides. And just a always reminder that the revenue forecast assumes slower economic growth. But not a recession, so which comes with elevated risk, so that we really need to be careful. And this is this is information from January, based on taxes that that the state received. And so we don't have information, obviously, for what the state collected in January. And then every single month, those are that really is going to, depending on how much the governor, the state receives, is really what, how, when we're going to see that some change, at least some changes, if there are any, and may revise and when he approves the budget in June. Proposition 98 and education budget, lower than expected, as mentioned. A decrease of $1.5 billion from the projected funding levels. Local control funding formula is going to get, or at least it's proposed to receive a cost of living adjustment. The governor's all remains committed to key priorities, which is his, as we've shared before, the transitional kindergarten that we implemented this year and then the expanded learning opportunities program. There is actually a proposal within the LCFF, the equity funding there. I'll have a slide there as well. And then a surprise, that we had no idea this was gonna happen. A reduction to this discretionary one-time funds for arts and music funding. Just to look at the Proposition 98, just to give you an idea of where the difference between the LAO and the governor's budget for twenty-one, for the three years, 21, 22, 22, 23 and 23, 24. So looking at 23, 24, which is the proposed budget, the governor is proposing $108 billion in Prop 98. So LCFF, this is just a quick overview. Eight point one three percent is the cost statutory COLA. The cost of that eight point one three percent is $4.7 billion. You see a different amount there of 5.04 billion, and that's because of the other the other, you know, categories there that are being funded. So including the what I mentioned earlier, this is a brand new in the proposal is equity multiplier. This is the intent for this is for school districts, actually, specific schools that have ninety percent free, that qualifies for free free meals, right, through the free and reduced application eligibility. Will get additional funding. This is at the elementary level and at the secondary level is eighty-five percent. As long as you have a school that qualifies for free meals, not free and reduced, just free, you get an additional money within your LCFF. And then, of course, the category programs will also get the COLA applied to those programs. The funding factors here, it's always good to see base grant and then adding the eight point one three percent COLA. We all know about the grade span adjustment for K3 as well as 912. And then, of course, that because of the the implementation for the transitional kindergarten, we're required to have a staffing ratio of twelve to one, that will continue. And so we are getting additional money for that, for the additional staffing that we need. And then, of course, then supplemental grants that we receive for our LCAP for our unduplicated students, we fall within that twenty percent supplemental grant. And for the school districts that have fifty-five percent and above unduplicated pupil percentage, they do get an additional amount, which is that sixty-five percent concentration grant. So we do have surrounding districts that do get the additional funds. However, we don't because we are below fifty-five percent. Next slide. So callsters, these are the rates that, just to share with you, since from 2013, the rate increased from 2013 to 2025 there. For specifically for callsters, sorry, callsters, I think I said callpers earlier, callsters. This is, so this is not going to change for, at least at this time, we're not hearing any changes for next fiscal year 22, 23. It will continue to be nineteen point one. We will know more come May if that rate is going to change. But as at this time, it's nineteen point one. So that's staying the same. And then the next slide is our callpers for our public school employees. This is changing from twenty-five point three seven to, sorry, twenty-five point two. And the projection is, or what they're proposing is twenty-seven percent. That's a two percent, at least a two percent increase. And then in the next slide, you'll see how much that is actually going to be. So from thirteen, fourteen, as you can see, we started our district contribution towards callpers and callsters was $2.8 million. And I know you can't see all the way to that right, all the way to the top, that is That is um, going up to 17.2 million dollars. So from 16.8 in the current year to 17.2. But if you notice, in 21 22, we were at 12.9 million dollars. So that's a from one year, from last year to this year, from 12.9 to 16.8. That's a 3.9 million dollar increase. Okay. So um, we've all heard about the proposition 88 arts and music that passed in in and in November. Um, this is a funding guaranteed, so this is ongoing. So um, the estimated estimated this, oh, the cost for this uh, proposition in 28, it's a it's nearly a billion dollars. And how funds are distributed to school districts will be, um, it's a they calculated based on a 70% of statewide enrollment of for from preschool to 12th grade. And then the 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 remaining 30% will be based on the low income students. So we we, uh, the requirement is to distribute uh, these funds to schools. Um, just based on the split that I I've shared with you. And 80% of the money the uh, that each school receives uh, will uh, we are required to spend it on staff. So whether it's classified or certificated, um, it's actually 80% should be spent on staff. So I want to share that with you. And then on the next slide, so because of the, as I mentioned earlier with the a reduction and governor is um, his, he act, he um, balanced the budget uh, without taking any money or or withdrawing from their reserves. How he balanced the budget is, here's one of them, which is really a surprise to us. Um, the arts, music and instructional material block grant. So this it was included, this is included in the budget this year. So we we knew about this, may revise. And so we assume the money in our budget in the current year. We had committed these funds. And now he's proposing to cut 1.2 billion dollars out of the 3.5 billion. That's a 34% reduction. So we can consider this as a mid-year cut. So I'll include a lot, all all districts, including our our district, is now looking at a 34% reduction. I know there's advocacy out there with their surveys that went out. And so we did uh, uh, share with with a lot of folks that, um, yes, all of these funds, because we knew that we were going to get these uh, dollars, we uh, we committed them, we budgeted them. They're all pretty much spent, right? So um, but how he's doing it is because the reason why he's able to pull uh, 1.2 billion dollars out of the 3.5 that's already in his budget is because of the apportionment. So currently, what we receive is only a portion of that money. So now he's actually you wanting to pull back the the last apportionment for this, for these funds. And so um, I just wanted to share that with you because it is going to impact us. 34% of that is 1.9 million dollars is what we we expected to receive 5.6 million dollars. And if this um, comes, if if he continues to 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 pull that 34%, then it's a 1.9 million dollar uh, reduction in our budget revenue. Um, the other uh, the other adjustment um, is actually coming from the facilities. So if you can, uh, uh, the the these are the facility investments that he that he's that were included in this budget this year. So a funding delay of 500 million dollars in um, yeah, one-time general fund investments uh, for 23 24 to 24 25. The facility, school facility program, um, some charter schools and also the school kitchen infrastructure that we were hoping at least a three of those that we will, um, you know, get. But that's, um, these are the ones that he's also, um, that will be impacted um, uh, along with the arts, music discretionary block grant. And next, so what's not included in the budget is uh, we've seen a lot of the category programs. I know when the influx of all this money, uh, he was, he proposed, he gave us, uh, you know, categorical programs, all these one-time monies with all of the requirements for us to submit a plan for how to spend those dollars. That's not in included in the uh, the 23 24 proposed budget. Uh, there is no um, reserve withdrawal that I mentioned earlier to balance the budget. No pension relief. That's why I wanted to include what that looks like for us. Uh, or at least historically, what we we worked the district contribution and what it looks like uh, for next year. Um, and then, of course, there's no COVID relief um, this time because he is more focused on business as usual. And then. Um, so our next, uh, now that we have a proposed budget, uh, we're working on our second interim report. We will update our our multi-year projection to reflect the the proposed budget uh, for because in our multi-year projection will include next year and then two subsequent fiscal years. Um, we're also working at the same time, we're also working in our zero-based budgeting. Um, uh, so we are working with our sites and our departments to prepare those documents. And so um, we we will have a workshop on the March 27 to go through um, the the documents. And then the final, uh, we will take it back on April 12 for approval. And then, once we have that, we will work then work on the actual um, uh, you know, work that we need to do to put it all in a sack, in a state software, uh, which is our 23 24 proposed budget. And that's when we'll take it twice, we'll take it to you on uh, June 14 for a public hearing. And then, of course, on June 28 will be the approval. Any questions?
There's gonna, um, I just following up before we start because the the 1.2 mil billion that he's cutting. Um, I did hear because they have to give our apportionment. The last time we met with AXA, they were like, he, they haven't even sent anything to stop the payments. So. Yeah. If they, if it comes, you know, people are like, well, he can't then pull the money back. But of course he can, he can, he can then say it's we owe it. And it's really a a trick that we're very unhappy about because the one-time money was called art, music and instructional material because he didn't give us any money for anything else. So it was already assumed. So anyway, I'm just wondering, sitting here going, what tricks are they gonna play?
Yes. So uh, thank you, um, Ms. Mahdi for sharing that because uh, that is actually a conversation where he, there's not a, he has, there, um, they haven't send anything to to pull it back or or so as far as we know, we will get the funds until that letter actually goes out from the governor's office. But um, what happens is we um, we will actually owe the state. So he will, there's a way that they they can actually take the money from our future apportionment. So that's um, how it will work.
And then I've seen a couple of hands raised, so I'm going to call them in order. Um, student member, student board member Hanson, followed by Vice President Kuziak, followed by Trustee Howard and then Trustee Raymond.
Yeah, just hearing that the budget isn't looking too good for next year is never a good thing, especially considering uh, previous board meetings from my limited view. I've seen that our financials are pretty good. Uh, so I guess I'll just ask the big question that at least I'm wondering, and this might be a big question they don't have an answer for. But what does that 34% reduction mean for the future?
Very good question. So 1.9, so as we were preparing, as I mentioned earlier, we're preparing for our multi-year projections, so that's looking at the current year plus the two out years since this proposal is for next year. So we will um, need to account for the or assume the cola that is being proposed. And at the same time, we need to reduce it, the um, that revenue that we already summed in the budget. So the um, so the bottom line is not going to look, so we're not really going to get 8.13% cola, if that makes sense. Because there's a our dollar mark for 8.13 now is actually reduced by 1.9 million dollars.
I just want to clarify and make sure that that it was clear. It's not 34% of our whole budget, it's just 34% of that 1.9. And then from 8.1 because 1.9 is like 2%.
Percent.
Or, so that's what it is.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Kuziak.
I wasn't very happy with the governor's sleight of hand there, right? Um, um, having observed the like budget for a while and being a long-term state employee, if you will. Uh, it, it's confusing the indicators I'm seeing here, right? So we're talking about like a cola of 8.13% and thank you for telling us how that's not actually that. Um, but at the same time, it it seems to create expectations of growth, right, right? And and in a lot of ways, we are, it's not a disastrous picture for us. Um, but it seems like in that sort of kind of belt tightening you're seeing from the state, but we're we're also getting more funding for the arts, but we're pulling it, pulling some money over here. It just, it feels very uncomfortable. Um, but I I suppose the one thing I would just say is like, even if we're not talking about COVID relief, I think every school district in California, we we just heard it in the previous presentation, we we have long, long-term COVID, right? We we have mental health issues. And I'm just wondering how we're going to advocate and ensure that that's permanently in our budget and our English language learners as well, as we heard tonight, um, and just the other impacts. So that's all. That was just commentary. Thank you for what you do.
Trustee Howard.
Well, I actually think the budget's not too bad. I mean, it's uh, uh, most of the cuts in the state budget were not in Prop 98. So Newsom stayed out of that pretty well, pretty much. So Sarah and I were at the Capitol Advisors' presentation over at the county office a week or so ago. And they went through the first interim. And they had a couple of comments that I remember from there. One was about the arts and music pullback. It's a little bit like what you said. They couldn't get any rationale from the governor's office or anybody about it. And they, what they were speculating was, they simply ran out of time and had to balance the budget. And they just lined it out. So they think that there may be some adjustments coming back. And as you say, they haven't sent anything forward to stop it yet. I think they're still trying to figure it out. And the other thing that I remember them saying is, yeah, it won't be an 8.18 cola. But their guess, as I remember it, was somewhere between 7.5 and maybe just a tiny bit over eight. They weren't sure yet, but it's that, again, for a cola is the second best cola maybe that I've ever seen since I've been on a board, so. Yeah. Anyway, those are just my comments. It's, I don't think it's that disastrous. And I don't think we know the whole story yet. You know, the legislature's got a way in. And they were also pointing out that everybody's new, except for Newsom. And uh, they don't know what they really want to emphasize and how they're going to be able to negotiate and everything. So stay tuned for more.
Trustee Raymond.
Yeah, so I will just ditto the comments from uh, Trustee Howard as what I heard as well. But I also wanted to add that one of the interesting um, pieces of the pullback or the the the, sorry, the 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 revocation of mid-year funds, mid-year revocation of funds. Um, especially to arts and music. I am personally very interested to see how this is going to play out statewide, given that the purpose of Prop 28 is, by the language of the statute it created, is to supplement, not supplant, you know, those funds. And so I'm curious, first of all, uh, whether or not there is any organization organizing going on within um, you know, the the network of districts throughout the state to fight back against this a little bit. Um, you know, I I'm just curious to see what's going to happen next. Um, and also curious to see how it's going to impact or if it might impact this idea of like the 1% of the prior year. You know, minimum guarantee, uh, you know, is this going to change what the prior year was? In terms of 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 how we're going to calculate what's owed to us, you know, to 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 fund these programs and and these, um, you know, staff payment, you know. So I'm, I guess I don't really have a question necessarily. I'm just very interested to see how this is going to play out, you know, over time. I guess I do have a question, and this might just be because I don't know the answer to this. But if the governor is trying to pull back funds mid-year, does that not have to be approved by legislature? And and is there some organizing to do around that?
Hmm, I was going to say, it's it's a huge part of what we're doing right now at the state. So I know AXA, CSBA, CTA, CS, everybody is pushing back on the governor to say it's really not fair because you have reserve, like this Chan said, he hasn't touched the reserves and he can do that. But I don't know, in the end, it's all up to him. But legislators decide and he has to sign the budget. So and the problem is that like 80% of the legislators are brand new. They have, they don't know anything about LCFF. So they could really just murky the water and say, oh, well, we're giving them this. We have the the uh, the multiplier. So that's difficult. That's why we really have to speak. And for us here, speak to our, you know, local legislators as well. But there's a huge advocacy at the state.
It's I just, you know, would would add, it would probably be who I saw, you know, within our own, you know, networks as
Yep.
Board members to be reaching out to our connections.
Yeah.
And also to be working with colleagues on other, you know, district boards to do the same. So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Howard.
You know, just to make that more complicated, I think is that uh, it's really going to be tricky to do that because, to do anything with that because the Prop 28 money is obviously a proposition. I don't think the governor and the legislature have the authority to change the spending of that. It's going to have to be new positions. So I don't know how they'll work that out.
Use your microphone, please.
I was just commenting on how if if the if the funding itself is going to be determined based on prior year spending or or guarantee, I'm curious to see how that may impact what comes to districts out of Prop 28.
Yeah, that's actually a very interesting point because I think Ms. Chan and I both heard that people are concerned that some districts actually are cutting programs for art and music this year so that they can say we are not supplanting, we're supplementing. So I know someone shared that with me and I'm like, that's not okay. But.
Well, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Chan, thank you so much for your presentation. Glad to hear it's better, not worse, as worse as we thought. Um, and look forward to hearing more later in the year when that gets firmed up. We will now move on to item D, adopt resolution 38 22 23, classified support staff reduction enforced. Dr. Zamora.
As such with legislature, we have new legislature that we have to provide notice for a classified staff. So the administrators, well as district staff, have to have a really forethought as far as what the funding is going to be for next year, uh, three months earlier than we're accustomed to. So we have to provide notice to our classified staff, just like certificate staff, in March 15 notice. So based on that legislation, we're proposing these three layoffs. The funding sources are either specialty funds such as one-time money for categorical grants or sponsored by the PTA. So these are the three employees that we're bringing forward to you.
Thank you, Dr. Zamora. And uh, just to uh, student board member Hanson, um, the next two are personnel. So I'm not going to call for your vote when we ask, but this is an action item. Oh, oh, microphone, please.
Sorry. Uh, I'll move adoption of resolution 38 22 23.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond.
Uh, yeah.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will also vote yes, so the motion passes five zero. Now back to you, Dr. Zamora, for the personnel report.
And the personnel report along the same lines with the March fifteenth notice, you'll notice that the listing is quite long compared to others. Again, we have to provide notice for our temporary and categorical employees by March fifteenth to prepare for the, for the following year. So what we're doing in the, starting last year, we started this process very early because we want to rehire them quickly before they go looking elsewhere. So this is why it's so early to be proactive so that they're not out searching. We're going to hire them back as soon as possible. Thanks to Assistant Superintendent Chan, she's also looking at the funding to see where we can secure that funding. Of course, Superintendent Amari's also reviewed that. So we'll start that process quickly thereafter. We'll be much more ahead than other school districts, which is always the plan.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Zamora.
Move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just have one question. As you said, the list was very long. And when I read it, I felt a little like, oh, what's happening? And I understand the rationale. My only question is, are the people on the list, have they already been notified that they're on that list? So that they kind of, so there won't be a surprise to them.
Correct. Our site administrators have had communication with them.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah, you know, the law is meant to give employees some security in the future. But the unintended consequence is that it puts us in a, it's them in an awkward spot and us in an awkward spot. So we are stuck with the law. So I appreciate the fact that Raoul's trying to make it as gentle as possible. I think that's, we all appreciate that.
And in the usual practice, unfortunately, is to release the employees before March fifteenth and wait until May to hire them back. By then, and in the circumstances that we are currently, it's too late. So thankfully for all our staff that's been trying to work on this as quickly as possible to start sending out the rehire contracts for next school year.
Trustee Raymond, your vote.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
This is President Whitaker.
And I almost called you assistant principal. And I will vote yes, so the motion passes five zero. And we will move on to our next item, Facilities and Budget Committee.
Yeah, so this is amended because I actually should have said subcommittee. Because a subcommittee, the difference between a subcommittee and a committee, for example, we have CBOC. Committees are usually things that are like required by, like CBOC is a required committee. And you have, you actually have to have like applications and all sorts of things. Subcommittees are really your working committees, subcommittees. So that there are two board members and staff, you get into the nitty gritty of the stuff. And that's why it's a subcommittee. I would suggest that we also, because we had talked about SOAR and like, does this replace SOAR? It actually really doesn't. Because you need SOAR because you have community members and staff. And there there are discussions that you can actually have in SOAR that not necessarily you would have in the subcommittee and vice versa. But they work together. So like you would bring, you know, you would share recommendations and back and forth and then bring it back to the board. So tonight, you're just, you're discussing that and then we need two board members on that in the subcommittee. That's it.
I'm just going to say I'm not going to put my name in the hat because I am too full. So.
Um, I I'd like to volunteer.
Okay, well, hold on. We we had everybody raising their hands, so I think we should have a discussion about it. So.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just going to say, no, I don't want a motion yet. I think we need to discuss as a team and what I have, and Amy, you can let me know if I'm wrong. I counted Dolly has five points, Gary has four points, Mike has five points, and Sarah has four points. So that's something in consideration that I'd like you all to consider. So I will, I saw Vice President Kuziak raises his hand first. So do you want to speak?
I I I was just really happy to see this on here because I I've been suggesting that this would be a good committee, subcommittee to have. You know, I was kind of looking at the allocations and just, I'm hoping, considering that we are looking at, you know, there's a new board member and we're adding a new subcommittee. Maybe we also look at, maybe we're also assigned. I mean, I I would personally, I would love to be on this. I I think this is an important function. I'm also willing, if it's helpful, to create a spot on the policy subcommittee. I know we typically say it's for two years, but I'm also recognizing we are changing kind of the fabric of our committee structures here. But I I I'd like to put my my name in the hat, but also offer to step back from the the policy subcommittee because I I think, you know, the set policy subcommittee and the budget and facility subcommittee really are these two sort of official board subcommittees. And I think it'd be nice to have a representation from all board.
Well, I would like to say, since we've been on committees and we're already in February, I don't think changing up everything is a good thing because it's too much churn for our community. What I would say is, let's see who would like to be on the budget and facilities committee. And let's commit to what we've done for this year. And that's my proposal. And then, you know, we'll have other opportunities to switch out, you know, when we come to to next year. And that, I just would like to really say consistent for now because we've already started relationships with our schools and community and teachers. And trustee Howard is next. Well, you were, you raised your hand next, and you need your microphone. Microphone, you need your microphone. No, you need to turn on your microphone so we can hear you.
It's too much to. Uh, I'm interested in being on it. I think it'd be good. You know, I would suggest, as you, as you pointed out there, we could look at the points and Sarah and I are low people on this. So that's my thought. I think you'd be, I think you're good on SOAR. I think there's a.
Well, and I would also say, if you're on SOAR, there are two separate things that need to coordinate. You know, so I would say for Dolly and Michael, you're both on SOAR already. So if, and this is just my suggestion because everybody wants to be on it. If you want to be on the budget subcommittee, would you mind switching? Or the other, I mean, like, because that's, that's, that's what I would.
Yeah, I mean, I, we haven't really done anything with this for this year. Yeah.
If we re-energize SOAR now that we have this.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be willing to step off of it. I I, but I'm here to build consensus and be collegial, so we'll, we'll make something work, so.
And Dolly, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I would be willing to switch SOAR for the financial budget committee as well.
Trustee Raymond.
Yeah, so I, I mean, as you pointed out, I've got four points in terms of, you know, service, you know, to to offer right now. And most of my, most of my assignments are as, most of my assignments are as an alternate, in fact, which makes me wonder how much involvement I'm really going to wind up having in those, in those roles. And I, you know, I'd like to do, I'd like to have something needy, you know, to work on here. That's why I I'm here. It's not just to see if I'm needed, you know. So I would really like to be on the budget and facilities committee. If not, that if anybody wanted to come off of, for instance, the policy, I would take that. But it sounds like we're not going to mix those things up right now. So that's, that's what I'd like to, I would, I would love to serve us in that manner.
So before we go forward, Amy has some information for us.
Um, I just had a thought and a concern if the two committees potentially merge and will ever have a meeting together. We can't have four board members, so we just need to make sure that that's very separate.
Yeah, they they would not have meetings together, but information would go from one committee to another one. Yeah. Very good point.
So I I know you all are advocating. I don't know who wants to make a, to acquiesce on this one.
Okay, I I'll acquiesce. I mean, I I think it's important for Sarah in particular to gain experience on a on a committee. So I'd be willing to stay with SOAR and on the policy subcommittee.
Thank you. And then trustee Howard and trustee Adams. I mean, how do you two want to work through this one?
Can I just, yeah, can I, can I just say? I think it's really important that we have a balance of some, like if we have someone who's newer with someone who's actually done a lot of the facility, has been there, worked on the budget, all sorts of stuff. I'm just going to say that. It just makes sense because then you have a balance.
Well, Dolly, would you be amenable to having Gary on this year and then potentially going on next year? That way we have the balance. It was a two-year, two-year commitment. Would you be okay with that, just to make sure that we can establish the new committee and with Gary's institutional knowledge?
So Lavender, you're saying he would have a two-year?
Yeah, it's a two-year term, if you see on the sheet.
Not one. Well, I I guess so.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that trustees Howard and Raymond serve on the budget and facility subcommittee.
I suppose I could second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I just want to thank the board for working together to come to a conclusion and consensus for our community. Thank you. Trustee Howard.
I just, I think this is a good mix, in all honesty. I like Mike on the SOAR committee because I think the way I see that thing working out, I think your talents, we can talk about it later on, but I think they mesh really well with that. Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. So I think that's good. So thank you also, Dolly.
Oh, you're welcome.
So, um, student board member Hansen, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the motion passes six zero. Thank you all so much. Then the next item, and I, you know, I'm going to say just a couple of words to open this up. The board met to work on our revised governance team handbook. It was a very collegial event. It was great to learn a little bit more about each other. And I think it's a great move forward in our direction on how we work together as a board. And for those of you out here who is still on the line, holding on strong, it's really how we work together to set the stage for how the rest of, you know, how we work together and make sure that we're a collegial and productive board. And so I just want to thank you all for your time and commitment to our community and 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 working together. This is an action item.
Move approval of our 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 team handbook.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Student board member Hansen.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I vote yes, the motion passes six zero. Now we will move on to our board member comments and reports. Student board member Hansen, do you have anything else you'd like to share with us tonight?
Only that I am inspired by the cooperation of our board members. Thank you.
Trustee Raymond.
Well, then. I I feel like I've been a very busy bee. It feels like it's been a very full couple of weeks. As we shared earlier, trustee Howard and I visited the ROP facility about a week ago, which was really fantastic. And if any of you haven't had an opportunity to visit, highly recommend. It was it's experiential, hands-on education. There is literally no substitute for it. And it was fantastic to see it happening in front of us like that. Got to talk to a few students who really are enjoying their time down there and are very excited about the opportunities, you know, for their futures. And it was just really, it's really nice to see. So I I was glad to be there and glad that we are a part of that. And I wholeheartedly look forward to advocating for it in the future. Gary and I actually had a very busy day that day. We went from the era to the ROP to the Capitol Advisors' presentation on the budget. Great learning opportunity right there. Then later that week, I think that was that week, I went to the the Music Parents Society, put on the music showcase for the middle school and high school performing groups. And that took place up at Canyon Middle School. It was fantastic. It was, I I I don't have kids who perform. I don't have kids who play music. They are not interested in anything like that at all. And so I haven't really attended anything like this since I was, you know, docenting as the music teacher at Van Nuys. You know, so this was like, it was very, I I don't have the right adjective. I, to see that many members of our school community in one place doing incredible things together, especially coming out of the horrible COVID years, you know, it just was like, I was in tears like many times during the performances because frankly, we've had some crazy talented kids, amazing teachers who make it happen and pull it all together. And the parents who organized the whole thing, well, I mean, seriously, hats off to all of them. It was incredible. So loved it. Then, you know, as a parent, my sons attended, one of them attended the winter ball at the high school and had a blast. That was fantastic. Hats off. And my other son just came back from outdoor school, from our first group to go back post-COVID. So that was really exciting and we're all looking forward to attending Battle of the Valley next week. Go Creekside and see how that goes. So thanks, you guys.
Trustee Adams.
Yes, of course, I attended the workshop that we all attended. And then I also attended the Capitol Advisors', but via Zoom from Santa Clara County. But of course, the Capitol Advisors' budget meeting was about the state budget. It wasn't really about the, you know, what's happening in Santa Clara. It's just they offered it via Zoom. So that was better for me considering how I've been feeling. So and I think that's all, the only ways I've represented the board, those two things this time around.
Trustee Howard.
Some of these things have been talked about already before, you know, I was with Sarah at ROP and at the Capitol Advisors' briefing. You know, I didn't get the slides from them yet, did you?
I have them.
I emailed them today to ask them for them. If I get them, I'll send them to you once or when I get them.
Trustee Adams is such, Adam, can you send them?
Send them to Gary and who?
Could you just send them to the board? That'd be great.
Okay, sure.
They're usually very good about sending them out, but they even talked about it, but I didn't get them certainly, so.
It it was in the like chat, so I I just downloaded them and I have them.
I see. I was at the ambassadors meeting at the adult school. Beth Cutter did a great job of explaining to all of them all the many things that they do up there in the terrific program they have. So it was a very nice evening. And I went to the Hard Awards a couple of weeks ago. They have a lunch every year where they give awards to the people that work for them and volunteer for them. And it's very, a really good day and a good opportunity to bond with our the other board. And they're all extremely happy with the agreement, man, which is really good. I mean, it was very pleasant to be around and everything was terrific. And finally, a couple of things in the near future or in the not-too-distant future. The student mental health workshop over at Cherryland Community Center is a week from today. So you're all welcome to come to that if you want. It's free. And the final thing is that the Chamber of Commerce is going to do their annual student citizen award lunch. It's in the planning stages. I think it's going to be in April, is that right? Remember correctly. So that's another possibility, something out there. Thank you. I, one more thing, I'm sorry. I was also at the ROP meeting this last, well, a week or so ago. And we have two new board members, one from Hayward, one from San, San Leandro. And we have two new board members, one from Hayward, one from San, San Leandro. And I was elected president of the ROP board again. So.
Vice President Kuziak?
Okay, first I want to thank Superintendent Amati, sharing your story tonight about being an English language learner. I think it's important. And I'm always, your life story inspires the hell out of me. And thank you for being so vulnerable and sharing that. Assistant Superintendent Chan, I want to thank you for our beautiful Creekside Fields. I was able to experience them. My son is on the junior varsity team. And I don't understand football, but I could understand that it was a very nice field and it looked great. Thank you, Measure G. Student board member Hansen, I'm going to mention your neighbor, Joanna Hogan. I want to thank her and everyone from the music parents. Sorry, the music parent society. That was a fantastic performance. I saw trustee Raymond there as well. It really just shows what an amazing culture we have around music in this district. That, that was, that, that blew me away. I, it's like the entire district was there that night. And I brought my younger son with me and it, it made them feel happy. My, my, my older son performed there as well. I went to coffee with a cop today. It's the, something that was being held over at the, the marketplace. And it was the, with the California Highway Patrol, who I think are very eager to be partners and friends with our district. And, you know, I think sometimes just sitting down with people who you might not think you agree with, it opens up really good conversations that you should have. And I think those are all basically all I had to say. I just want to acknowledge that February 24th would have been my mom's 71st birthday. I love her and I miss her. That's it.
Superintendent Amati?
Just giving you the date for the student citizen chamber event is April 13th. So it's a luncheon. We'll, we'll send you more information. It's a special lunch.
Superintendent Amati, and maybe I'm asking, Amy, can we get an appointment? For that luncheon? That'd be great if we could put it on our calendars because that.
Yeah, we'll put it in.
Thank you. And then I did not represent the board besides the board workshop, but I do want to thank our CVTA rep, Mark Maladnich for inviting us to the board breakfast this Saturday. I'm really looking forward to that, to attend that with the colleagues and hear from the teachers association. So thank you, Mark. We really appreciate that. And with this, want to thank our remaining audience for joining us tonight, both online and in the room. And thank you all for your engagement and information, questions and comments. And I hope you all have a lovely evening. And this concludes the CVUSD board meeting. Good night.